All right, I believe we are all here. Thank you, everybody, for showing up to the City Council Workshop of the City of Bonny Lake for November 21st, 2023. Let's salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let the record reflect that Ms. Robertson was multitasking and could salute the flag and walk at the same time. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kula.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Evans. Councilmember McLeimans.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Do we have a motion on Councilmember Evans?
Oh, moved. Back in.
All in favor of excusing Councilmember Evans from the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. We will tell Councilmember Evans.
He didn't ask me.
All right, let's move on to open discussion. Anybody have anything to discuss before we move on to the other items?
I do.
Yes, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring up what former council member Dan Decker had brought forward on the fluoride. So I've been doing a little bit of research and got this here. So December 21st of 2000, the FDA recognizes fluoride is a drug and not a nutrient. Fluoride, when used in the diagnosis, cure, mitigation, treatment, or prevention of disease in man or animal, is a drug that is subject to the FDA administration. In summary, FDA does not list fluorine as an essential nutrient. A nutrient can only be considered a nutrient if it's psychologically needed by the body. It is, though, therefore, because fluoride is not a nutrient and is not needed by the body, it is considered to be a drug. Therefore, if something is a drug, it can only be prescribed by a licensed dentist or a doctor, according to the FDA. So we, and if it's a drug, then you have to consent to taking it. Therefore, we can't have it in our water, and we need to figure out what we can do with Tacoma, if, or if we have to purchase a filter system, or ask Tacoma to filter it for us. This is a dangerous neurotoxin, and it should not be in our water supply at all. There's been a lawsuit that was brought May 25th of 2023 against fluoride. And on April 20th of 2023 as well, Jay Inslee, the governor, signed a declaration that if you want to remove or add fluoride to your water system, you have to get, you have to do a 90 days public notification. So I would like to ask if we can get Tacoma Water Systems to start their public notification, public hearing notification, give their 90 days notice, to see if they're be willing to remove it from their water system. That way, we don't have to purchase a million-dollar filtering system to get it out of our water, because we actually have an ordinance, which I believe was written by Councilmember Swatman. Was it 2002, Councilmember Swatman? Were you, or something like that, where you wanted, we had it so that it was removed or not added to Bonny Lake water. So we have it, so it's not supposed to be in our water at all. Our people are drinking our water, thinking that they're not getting fluoride, and it's being put in through the Tacoma Water System when we have to purchase their water as an overage. So just a thought, if we can figure out how to do something, because this is another litigation that's going to come down and bite us in the rear end if we don't get this out of our system.
Councilmember, I do have two questions, one of them being the lawsuit that you mentioned. Where is that lawsuit?
It's May 5th of 20, or May 25th, and let me find it for you. I think I took a picture of it. It's the people, it's called FAN. The lawsuit, let's see, so... I'm not sure where it was filed. Let's see. Why is fluoride being sued? The lawsuit has included pointed testimony from the leading experts on the environmental toxin and administration from both the EPA and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention officials, that fluoride could be linked to specific harms. The lawsuit has also revealed government interference in crucial scientific findings.
What, is it a state of Washington?
The lawsuit was brought to the attention with the new research. I'm trying to figure out where the name of the FAN is. FAN is like fluoride something network or something like that, like can't, but that's the group, the executive director of FAN is Paul Connet. And it says, you know, there's just like, let's see. The lawsuit has brought attention to new research that links fluoride exposure to damaging neurodevelopment effects, concerns that have sometimes been deemed conspiracy theories. Options to fluoridation is now at least 70 years old, but for the most, but for most of that time, it has been wrongly dismissed as fringe and unscientific. Fans, Executive Director Paul Connet said in the statement, "The rapidly emerging science on developmental neurotoxicity, especially loss of IQ from early life exposure to fluoride is a game changer." Many of, many of the most important science on fluoride has come via research funded with millions of dollars by the National Institution of Health.
And Mr. Johnstone, when have we, if ever, conducted a water survey or water study to see about the amount of fluoride that we may have in our water here?
So we issue water quality reports every year. The information on fluoride that is contained in that report comes from sampling conducted by Tacoma Public Utilities, because they're the source of the fluoride that's in our system.
Okay.
My suggestion would be that we reach out to Tacoma Public Utilities and invite them to have a representative come to a future council meeting where they can discuss this. I think that that would probably be the best use of time, and they would be able to speak to the issues with fluoride in their drinking water supply more effectively than, I think, staff here could.
Oh, absolutely.
If that's something that would be welcome, I'm happy to make those arrangements.
Oh, yes, that, I think that'd be great. Are the results published anywhere to where citizens have access to how much fluoride we may have in our water?
Correct, yes, all of that is posted on our website. If you go to the Water Utility page on our website, it has all of our water quality reports and our yearly, yearly information that we put out for the public on there.
All right, thank you. Any commentary, Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up also on the citizen comment in regards to fluoridation in the water. I've been talking with a couple of other science folks that I know, and I think my concerns are based solely and primarily on principle. I wanted to read a couple of things as well. The first thing is, I've been looking at some different published research studies, looking at evidence of whether fluoridation has any kind of effect on the populace as far as reducing dental caries in the population. And so after looking at quite a few things compared to just fluoridation levels with countries versus ours, wanted to just kind of read this here. It says, "New evidence suggests that fluoridation is either unnecessary or doesn't work. Cavities have declined at similarly impressive rates throughout the entire Western industrialized world over the past half-century. This decline has occurred irrespective of a country's fluoridation status. Western Europe, which is 98% unfluoridated, has experienced the same decline in cavities as the heavily fluoridated U.S. and today enjoys the same low level of tooth decay." Also, 98%, like they were saying, of Western Europe has rejected fluoridation for this reason, again, based on principle. For example, comment from Belgium, "The fundamental position of the drinking water sector, that it is not its task to deliver medicinal treatment to people. This is the sole responsibility of health services," which I agree as well, also the choice of the people. I also don't want fluoride in my soup regardless of the amount of fluoride that is in it. Also, when water fluoridation began 50 years ago, it was believed that fluoride needed to be ingested in order to be effective, so that was its kind of beginnings there. This, however, is no longer the view of the dental establishment, which now generally concedes that fluoride's benefits are derived primarily from topical application, which a lot of us get at the dentist. According to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control Laboratory and Epidemiologic Research, suggests that fluoride prevents dental caries predominantly after eruption of the tooth into the mouth, and its actions primarily are topical for both adults and children. Again, the need to ingest it is just not there. Also, or lastly, while fluoride's benefits are primarily topical, its risks, any kind of risks that have been shown through research where there is solid evidence, has to do with when it's ingested, when it is swallowed into the body, not necessarily absorbed through the skin and things like that. So that's my main concern, is that I just, why continue a practice that just is not based in science?
No, that's most informed.
So that's, those are my thoughts.
That's what hopefully our Tacoma rep, when they come, will help answer some of those questions and concerns. Anybody else?
So I've got the, it's the Fluoride Action Network, FAN, sued the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, under the Toxic Substance Control Act of 2017. And that lawsuit was filed on May 25th of 2023.
It looks like Councilmember McLeimans did pull it up, got the information. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
I'll add one last argument that is primarily used by the general public in their, I guess, their, I can't even think of the word, when they're trying to...
Brush their teeth.
It literally lost, it's, it lost, anyway, I will continue. Yeah, that's great, yeah, thanks. But basically, that fluoride is found naturally occurring in the environment, and so people will say, well, you're already ingesting it, your other argument, thank you, to defend the position. The level of fluoride found naturally in women's breast milk, for example, which is where we would, one would expect to find high levels of fluoride if it were necessary for the development of healthy teeth in humans, which it is not, is 100 times lower, 0.01 milligrams per liter, than the level of fluoride added to municipal water. So, there's that as well.
Okay. Do we have any further commentary on the matter, besides the fact that Councilmember Baldwin is a wonderful debater, and I would hate to go against her on any of the stuff?
Just based on principle, that's all.
Yeah, so just the fact that fluoride is not a nutrient, it is a drug, and it was declared by the FDA, December 21st of 2000, that it is considered a drug and it is not a nutrient. Therefore, if it is a drug, it has to be administered via prescription, and it cannot be administered without a license. And it has, and because it's a drug, you have to consent to taking it. So people did not consent, they didn't sign a consent form that, hey, yeah, I'd like to drink some fluoride today, so I think the public needs to be made aware of that.
Absolutely.
That's all I got for you. I'm gonna...
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further open discussion before we move on to the action items? Yes, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, I got one. I don't know what the next steps for the Parks Comp Plan is. I was hoping maybe Jason was here, but he's not. Do you know, is that something we're going to pass by the end of the year then, or? He's like shaking, is that kind of, maybe possibly?
They'll be returning back to council, I believe, in February.
Oh, in February, or something like that, yeah. Because I still had concerns of making sure that we, kind of, you know, I was wanting to relook at the WSU piece and see if there's any more activities that we could look at on that. But as long as we're not going to pass that by the end of the year, I'm not too concerned about that, yeah. Right now, thank you.
Okay. Anything further before we move on? Okay, so let's move on to the review of the council minutes. Councilmember Watson?
No corrections.
I am going to miss that, Councilmember Watson, I really am.
We're all good. Glenn's all over it, though.
I gotcha.
Okay, we'll now go to our discussion items, and Madam Clerk.
This is Discussion Item AB 23119, Ordinance D 23119, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, adopting the mid-biennial budget amendment for budget years 23 and 24. The public hearing for this was November 14th, 2023.
Okay, any discussion on the matter?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, oh, yes, Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was there an allocation in there for a study for the public, the police building currently, right?
Yes, there is. There's a decision card at the end of the packet, and it's a $50,000 expense to study the Public Safety Building.
And that's a new proposal for that kind of thing? I don't, you know, I'm not on Public Safety Committee directly, I know it's interesting that, is there a good idea of what, you know, the council's wanting to go after over there so that they can turn the consultant loose with some basic idea of what, or is it just completely open type of a thing?
I have some ideas on that.
Okay, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so because the East Pierce County has built their building and they're moving, that means that all the fire engines, all the fire trucks, everything, Fire Department is going over to the new building. We had discussed at some point making that, making one of the conference rooms a emergency management strategy room for the emergency management in case of another, you know, Lahar or fires or whatever, and we lose our, all of our electricity and everything, a strategy room, but also basically just turning that whole entire building into a public safety for the police department, other than the emergency management areas that they make. But, yeah, because right now it's half Fire Department, half Police Station, so I believe that we were considering making the whole entire building the Police Station, and I know Council, or Deputy Mayor Carter was hoping that we could get some more jail cells so that we don't have to constantly spend, you know, thousands of dollars to lock up our criminals, so if we could turn some of that into like, you know, jail cells, right, to save money for the community, but also it's a necessity because we need to have some, some areas to put people so that we're not, we don't have officers off the street while they're transporting the criminals to another jail, you know, 10 miles, 15, 20 miles down the road. So it was just, you know, those are some of the options that we were discussing in public safety, I believe.
No, those are points well taken, Councilmember Fullerton. So if I could just clarify, this action would just allocate the funds for the study, it wouldn't be defining the scope of work? So if the funds were allocated, then we'd have to work through a process. Well, first, we need to find out when Chief Barry's going to kick the Fire Department out. Do we have an ETA for that? I think mid-June, they're talking.
Okay. Hopefully, the, Mr. Mayor, the council, or, you know, Public Safety Committee or what have you, is involved in that scoping kind of concept.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Make sure you don't miss anything, you don't get through your study, and then the council looks at it and says, well, this is not what we wanted.
No, we are definitely not going to do that. Yes, Mr. Ierson.
Yeah, this was also a decision card at the full budget, when, which council asked for this to come back when we kind of knew when East Pierce Fire was going to move out. So it was proposed to bring back at this time, so we're bringing it back for your guys' consideration.
Oh, very good. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Fullerton as far as the police department. Really, there's a couple of things there, though, that I are kind of divided. Jail would be a whole separate issue at this point. I would still love to do that in the future, but that's a much bigger issue. Right now, I think the police department needs the space. They're cramped over there where they are, and they need the space to kind of fill out with their, the new officers and things that they're doing. They just need more space. So taking over some of that space and using it in a practical way, in which I would think would involve the police chief and the officers answering questions as far as exactly what it is they need, is just as important as what the council wants or thinks over there.
Absolutely.
Involving everybody, I think, would be very prudent in this matter, rather than the process that Councilmember Swatman was suggesting, that somebody comes up with a bunch of great ideas, and then it comes before the council and they get quashed.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion on the matter? Because I believe this is on the consent agenda for next week? All right. Okay, let's move on. Madam Clerk.
This is Discussion Item AB 23120, Ordinance D 23120, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, setting the amount of the annual ad valorem tax levy necessary for the fiscal year 2024 for the purposes set forth below. The public hearing on this was November 14th, 2023.
Okay, and do we have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Swatman.
This is just our normal tax levy, right? It doesn't have any extraordinary provisions on it or anything like that?
I believe so.
I see our CFOs shaking their head, yes.
You're correct. This actually only increases the total levy by the $33,000, which is the 1%.
Property tax to the property owners.
All right, any further discussion on the matter?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Yeah, so does this need to go to a vote of the people or anything, or is this, okay? So this is something, since it's a levy, this is something that was probably already passed before?
Well, I believe it's on there.
So this is the annual, yeah, so this is the annual property tax. Our portion of it, which is only about 9% out of your property tax bill, goes to the city. The rest of it goes to other places, yeah. So this is just the annual property tax. We have to have a hearing on it every year, which we did a week ago. Gosh, it feels like forever ago. And then we reapprove it, yeah. My timeline's so messed up, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or discussion before we move on? Okay, and again, this is on next week's consent agenda, so let's go on to Item E. Madam Clerk.
This is Discussion Item AB 23154, Motion M 23154, a motion of the City of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement between the City of Bonny Lake and the City of Sumner for the coordination of cooperative wastewater services. It is discussion only.
Well, pardon the pun, I was wading through that interlocal agreement just today, and it reads fascinatingly, Ms. Robertson. Do we have any discussion on the matter? Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Looking through all the legal jargon of the former paperwork, as well as the current interlocal agreement, and I guess my question is, and I really appreciated the background summary and everything like that, very succinct, my question is, are there any changes on this? I know that we have been continuously discussing how we're going to move forward with Sumner, so I'm just wondering, like, is this just a renewal of something?
It's a new agreement.
Or is this new, and what is new about it?
Mr. Johnstone.
Yeah, I would love to address that.
Okay.
Thank you. So a little bit of history, maybe, to set the stage. This would be, I think, if we count them all up, the fourth agreement that we would be entering into with the City of Sumner, since the first one being the 1984 intergovernmental agreement. This is, what is being proposed here is taking the previous 2012 agreement, it is stripping out a whole bunch of legacy language for items that were in there pertaining to the past expansion of the treatment plant, and I apologize, I feel like I'm, like, really loud, so I'm going to try.
Actually, no, I can't even hear the people.
You're good, yeah. You could talk louder if you want to.
I can hear you very...
So what this, what this proposed version does is it strips out all of that legacy language from before, and that's basically, if that 2012 agreement is included in the packet, that's basically Sections 2 through, I think it was 11 or 12, it strips all that out. It does offer a lot of clarification regarding aspects of our agreement between the two cities that we've not had in previous agreements. Specifically, what that dives into is we actually created a definition of terms section so that everybody had clarity on what it is we're talking about in various areas of the agreement. And I'll hit the high points here, maybe before I do this, though, just let me give you a little bit of an update on what the schedule looks like for this. You'll see on the agenda bill that I actually have a meeting date of December 12th. I knew that there was a lot of information here to digest, so this was the first introduction of the agreement. If need be, I'm prepared to bring it back to workshop on December 5th for more conversation, if necessary, and then I'm hoping that a week later, the mayor will be given authorization by the council to actually sign the agreement, December 12th.
I certainly agree with bringing it back on a different workshop. This issue really needs to be vetted before we go forward on it.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. So just moving on, as far as kind of the primary here on what you have in front of you tonight, we added, as I said, the definition section, we clarified the term of the agreement, we made some changes in the administration of the agreement. The previous agreement did contain language for a joint advisory committee. We expanded upon what the role of that committee is, and also we expanded on the membership. Previously, the membership was composed of the mayor, city administrator, and a single council member, as well as the public services director from the city. We've opened that up to include three council members now. The idea being is that we really wanted to make an effort to create as transparent a process as possible, and make sure that any information about what's going on between the two cities is getting disseminated as widely as possible. We know that that has been an issue that's been shared with us in the past, that there's some were feeling a little unplugged from what was going on. So in an attempt to try and rectify some of that, we expanded the role of the council members in the joint advisory committee. We also moved from meeting one time a year to meeting quarterly, four times a year, and those quarterly meetings will be in coordination with when we are getting billed for service from the City of Sumner. So if need be, the joint advisory committee meetings can be used to talk specifically about billing and what's, what is, what we're being billed for. Another new item is the Technical Working Group. This would be a staff-level group that would also be meeting whenever necessary to discuss issues at the treatment plant and how those get handled between the two cities. Other new and clarifying statements in Section 5 of the new agreement, you'll see additional wording on capacity ownership, and really trying to make that clear, what each city owns in the capacity of the plant, the treatment capacity of the plant. And probably the biggest driver is that same section also includes the new pre-treatment program. The 2012 interlocal agreement contained language that at some point we knew we would need to have a pre-treatment program, that the EPA under the Clean Water Act and through delegation from the state would say, this needs to occur now. We've reached that point. The 2012 agreement said that when that occurs, we would amend the existing agreement. So that is why, another reason why we're bringing this new interlocal agreement forward now, because we actually are instituting a pre-treatment program to serve both cities. And the pre-treatment program will specifically focus on non-domestic wastewater. So as we discussed in CDC earlier, any wastewater that is just discharged from any facility beyond a residential unit, though business discharge, wastewater flows, non-domestic. So we outline what that program looks like and the participation in here. CDC did have a couple of comments that we're going to look at it, at addressing and clarifying in that section. There is... Um, there is an expanded section on infiltration and inflow, which just basically, more than anything, so, uh, anything else is restating both cities' agreements to make sure that our collection systems are, are tight, and not bringing in extraneous water from non-wastewater sources, so that we're not sending clean water down to the Sumner Treatment Plant to be treated when that's unnecessary. Continuing to move forward, the cost-sharing section, which is Section 6, is a new section. Uh, and it addresses in there specifically guidelines for how biennial budgets will work, and how we'll get budget information from Sumner, so that we can put together our own budget, uh, the quarterly billing process, how the bills are calculated, uh, and then also a couple additional sections on unbudgeted expenses and, uh, compliance and capital improvements.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Johnstone. I, I actually am looking forward to be parting that, of that joint advisory committee. And I believe, uh, Councilmember Baldwin, would you like to be voluntold to be part of that?
You know, yeah.
We would love to have you.
No, in all seriousness, I, I, if we can bring it back, Deputy Mayor, to, um, to the workshop, so that we can discuss it and parse it out a little, um, a bit more, I believe this is, uh, quite an important subject to, uh, to look at twice before we move forward on it.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, too.
Um, love the definition of terms. I think that's really important, so that...
Is fluoride in the definition of terms?
No.
No.
Find those terms. What kind of floor are we talking about?
I'm sure we can start measuring what comes out as good as we can what goes in.
Um, I guess my question is, so you're saying, uh, the mayor, a mayor from both cities, three council members per city, I'm assuming, and Sumner is agreeing to this?
Yes.
They might.
Okay, so the, I guess, you know, they, in or, in order to make it so that, um, I, I think our biggest issue with everything that was going on with this agreement that really wasn't there and was kind of floating and not very clear, um, it, it just feels very much like, you know, we're the ones that aren't, you know, really benefiting or really having a say, I guess, in some of the decision-making. And so that's where I'm kind of just wondering, like, is, is that everything that you were just saying?
So part of the reason that we did expand upon this is so that, so that the story that is getting told up here, everybody does have more, uh, knowledge about what's going on, that you are hearing firsthand, uh, from, from those that are actually at the plant about what's going on, that you're there to hear about upcoming issues. Uh, and then that information can be disseminated to the remainder of the council members up here. Um, I can tell you, because this, this came up during, uh, our conversation during CDC, um, we, we want to work to mitigate that, because at the staff level, um, obviously, we, we, um, we have not, we don't feel that same unplugged feeling that members of the council are feeling. I, we're, we're part of discussions with consultants, and we're part of discussions and decisions that are being made as far as projects at the plant and everything else. So, so for whatever reason, if the council is feeling out of the loop, we wanted to create a space where more were included, one, and then, two, they had the opportunity to participate in some of those discussions. So we're hoping, long story short, to mitigate that. That's what this is providing.
Okay, so essentially, it's just opening a, a tunnel of communication, but as far as our concerns that we have been talking about over, like, a period of time, um, are not necessarily going to be addressed, I guess. You're, it's just opening a communication.
Well, I guess, I guess that maybe that's a conversation that we have to have more internally, because I'm not sure that I completely then understand exactly what it is that, that you're feeling left out about.
It's not, it's not left out. It's, it's, there's just, there seems to be that Sumner is calling a lot of shots, um, for something that maybe we should have more of a role in the making of decisions, especially financial ones. And when they're, you know, making decisions in there, then it's coming down the pipeline. We then have to allocate money and funding for those things, but then I guess the question then becomes, oh, Sumner just told us to do that, rather than there was discussions at, at a table, where we were equal shareholders at the table. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, I...
They are the primary, sure, they are the shareholder, and we're just, we're just a customer, it feels like. And we've had multiple conversations stating that.
So, so I, 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 I guess some of what I'm, I'm hearing then is, to, to state my position, I, I guess, from another angle, um, staff in Bonny Lake is involved in all of the decisions that they're making, project-wise, and, and whatever else for the, for the treatment plan.
Yeah.
The, the City of Sumner's not operating kind of on a, on a, out there on their own, and then just telling us this is what we're going to do. We, we are coming to the table at the staff level and taking part in those decisions, making sure that it's a, an approach we also are comfortable with and recommending, and then we make that recommendation to the council, as we would for any other project. So I guess I would, it would help me understand exactly what level of involvement you're looking to, to have, so that we can address that in the agreement, because I, it would be a little, um, it would be a little different, um, than what I'm normally used to, to be including, uh, to, to have council members interacting at the staff level when we're starting to talk about projects, where you're normally used to carrying those recommendations forward, explaining the justification, and then getting buy-in at that point, so...
I think it's, it's not necessarily what types of projects are going to be, you know, occurring, because obviously, like, that, that's important, that there's expertise in that. It's, it's all of the financial things that seem to be coming down the pipeline, then, to us, to make decisions, you know, to spend money that it doesn't seem like we were, you know, equally deciding on how to pay. I, I feel like I'm not imagining this. I, we've had multiple conversations...
Essentially, um, Councilmember Baldwin, we pay 60% of the bill, and we get no say in the price, the pricing, you know, like, we're, we're kind of stuck paying the bill, and all of our citizens, most of their water bill is the water sys, is the sewer treatment, as well as the metric system, um, fee, which is $99.
So, I, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying, Council, Councilmember Fullerton. I, I think it's, it's, the water utility and the sewer utility are two completely different things. I, I wasn't sure what, what was meant by the, uh, mentioning the, the water system. But the cost that this, the City of Bonny Lake pays and the City of Sumner pay for treatment of wastewater on a per-gallon basis is exactly the same. It's half a cent per gallon. Um, and so there, there isn't a different cost. We're not paying any more for treatment than, than the City of Bonny Lake pays for treatment. However, we use more capacity in the plant. We are, we do send a greater volume of, of wastewater down there. Um...
But haven't we had extensive discussions in regards to the capital improvement projects, and, you know, how, how they're being allocated as far as money-wise?
And, uh...
Bonny Lake versus Sumner?
Don't want to interrupt the discussion, but Councilmember McClymms has been trying to get a co, a comment in as well.
Well, I think it goes beyond just capital improvement, goes to, like, the, um, pre-treatment program, implementation of that, that's going to be a burden on businesses, right? And, um, the approach for that program, um, to make it cost-effective for the customers, right? I'm not quite sure. We're, we're, we're going to have a say in the policy. But are we gonna, how much of a say are we going to have in the implementation of it? Because there's going to be training involved. There's going to be collection of, of samples, I assume. I mean, there, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a non-trivial effort.
And so they, they, as far as pre-treatment program is concerned, I think it's important to understand who the authority has been given to by the federal government to administer the program.
Yeah, I see.
And City of Sumner has the controlling authority, and the, uh, of, of the, the pre-treatment program is the, uh, jurisdiction that has the, has been delegated the authority to administer that program. Um, as far as costs are concerned, as we discussed about in, in CDC, there are definitely some items to talk about there. One of the solutions we talked about was, uh, can, uh, perhaps developing a, a commercial sewer rate structure that, that attributes the cost of the pre-treatment program directly to those who are being, uh, who have to adhere to the regulations of that program. Um, regarding your question, Councilmember Baldwin, on, on costs, um, in 6B of the new agreement, under, or, excuse me, 6C, um, we do take different categories of expenses, joint facility operations and maintenance, joint facility major operating expenses, and capital improvements and compliance improvements, and we do define how those get paid for. Um, and if we need to break that out further, or maybe address that in a different manner, I, you know, I'd, I'd love to, to hear from the council on that. But this, this was one attempt that we made in the ILA to take some of the guesswork of, out of what it is that we're paying for and how much we're paying, because this actually then, uh, it defines how, how those costs are, are broken out.
Thank you, Director Johnstone. Uh, the concern that I have with it, I'm looking at the timing on this, because apparently this is, um, supposed to be on next week's consent agenda. Oh, okay, I see Mr. Vodapitch is shaking his head, and we did want the, the, another chance to discuss this, so...
Yeah, there's no time issue on this at all.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Our existing agreement is...
Bringing it back to workshop on the 5th, and if it passes out of workshop, December 12th.
Okay, sounds good. All right, uh, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, of course, one of my favorite agreements, right? And I, and I would maintain that this is probably one of the more important agreements that the City Council ever will deal with in a period of time. It's, and it's going to last for quite a long time, so due diligence in, uh, examining an agreement is greatly appreciated, Mr. Mayor, there, to take that into account. Um, a couple of things we had at, uh, CDC, I know that I noticed in there, you know, for food for thought, just for the discussion, doesn't need to be answered, just like the insurance requirements, you know, in the agreement, they actually specified a, a provider that we had to use for insurance, and, you know, my contention was, we can have insurance, but we don't need to be stuck with a particular provider on it. Also, there's some issues that they were going to work on with the term of the agreement, you know, just for the council to think about, you know, I, I would maintain that you need some kind of a term for this agreement, and it doesn't need to just go on forever until both parties decide that they want to change it. That's, like, good luck with that, right? Um, also, there's a, maybe a sticking point about, you know, Bonny Lake leaving the Sumner sewer plant, right? Um, and if you don't all know, we have two of the experts in the room with Sumner, um, plant, so if you want to talk to them before or after, they're actually there, that there's technical experts back here. You know, and the reason for, obviously, not wanting to be locked into their plant, you know, there's a lot of language in there that says that both parties would agree, so it's like, great. You know, we go to Sumner and we say, hey, we have this new technology, it's been great, you know, we appreciate you guys, but we're going to start plugging into our own plant, and they're like, yeah, no, you're not. And we're like, uh, wait a minute, you know, that's, that's the proposed agreement. So I think that needs to be dealt with in some way in there, because if we have, whatever, we have some kind of bio-plant or something, that magic way of getting rid of sewer ourselves, we need the ability to leave. That cost-sharing piece is the kind of crux of the agreement that I think, um, you know, Director Johnstone, um, or whatever you are, are you a director now?
He is a director.
I am.
Congratulations.
Noted.
Very good. Um, very aptly joint, uh, identified, you know, ways of paying for the thing. That's kind of a weird deal, because the whole thing's structured around, like, this, oh, yay, we're a party, we're mutual agreement, we're all happy. Sumner does an outstanding job taking care of the plant, you know, and, and all of our employees that work in that plant down there do a great job, too. By the way, there are none. Um, you know, the, this joint advisory committee that we have is all fine and good, and we all sit around the table and smile at each other. Um, they tell us what to do. We have the Technical Working Group, which is great. Again, the staff does an outstanding job of, like, figuring things out in the background, like they always do. You know, they're the experts, they got to do what they got to do. But in the end, um, a lot of it, it's just, like, Sumner gets to make the calls. And it's rightly so, because it is their plant, you know, right? We don't go to PSE and say, hey, we don't like what you charge us, so we're going to make a different rate, right? We don't go to the, whoever provider it is, uh, the cable company, and say, well, you can't provide that for us. So there's a thing there, and I don't know what exactly that is, because, you know, um, we have, like I said, a great relationship currently, and to me, agreements are always about having something to go back to when things aren't good.
And I, I...
We have disagreements.
It is a very good point, well-taken, uh, Councilmember Swatman. I believe the, what I like about this, uh, new interlocal agreement is the transparency that it will create.
Yeah.
And the, and the clarification of, of, of a little bit more understanding, especially with the council, if we have at least three council members that are going to be, uh, quarterly meeting at this point, rather than, uh, one meeting a year with a couple of people, and if they attend or not, you know, so bringing that, the, forward for that, so at least we understand how we're being billed, is a, a bit of an improvement.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll be billed appropriately by the amount that we use, you know. It's actually divided up into BOD and TSS and that kind of stuff, so the technical background of it, because, just, just because, you know, we use X number of gallons, doesn't mean that we have X number of cost in the plant, because of the math that they use between those formulas there. Um, so you got to watch those kind of things, you know, and that's what, you know, the whole crux of this, like, yay, we're holding hands. Um, how do you get around a problem where, you know, if somebody is, um, renting in your house, and they're paying half or more of your rent, and you want to put on a new roof for your house, what kind of roof are you going to buy, right? Well, if it's me, and I'm paying for the roof, I'm going to get the kind of roof that I want, that's going to be cost-effective for me to roof my house. If somebody else is going to be paying half of it, you can guarantee that there's a metal roof going on that house, because it lasts a lot longer and it's a lot better. Um, so I don't know how exactly you deal with that kind of a situation, because, like I said, today, they're not doing too much of that, but, you know, you kind of have to scratch your head a little bit, when they, they have a lot of stuff that they could do. They've definitely done stuff in the past where it's just like, yeah, that, that was inappropriate, you know, that they, like, hires people to do things, and it's like, really? You need a whole person to do that? And guess what? We get to pay half of it. So, you know, again, not having the people down there, but, you know, and it's, it's just, I don't know how you get around it, you know? We've, we've talked, you know, at the coffee table level about how to do that, but we'll find if somebody has a great way to do that, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's difficult to say, please.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, any further commentary on the matter? Because, oh, Councilmember Swatman, I'm sorry, my peripheral vision is just...
Wow, thank you for the compliment. Appreciate that, so, um... Uh, yeah, so I, I'm a little concerned, because there isn't a term, clear language on termination, right? And I'm also, um, wondering, it, I, there's a policy issue here of, you know, we, our rates are still the highest rates, right? And, um, it's like, is there any, um, motivation? This is a time where you put in, is this a time where you can put motivation into an agreement to say, how can we optimize and reduce rates, right? Because that, that's, that's part of a policy I would like to see go forward, is the recognition that we need to look at how to reduce rates, and the, what are the mechanisms for doing that? You either optimize your performance, or you, uh, institute, um, cost-cutting measures, or, um, you delay...
And why would they, right? That's, I agree 100%, why would they, just for the discussion purpose?
Because we write it in the agreement now, that's why.
Yeah, but agreement for what? And if they don't, it's, they're not going to agree to that, right? I know, I'm just discussing.
Yeah, well...
Openly discussing a weird...
Then rates will continue to go up.
Right? They bill us, we pay 60% of the bill, okay, it's done. Is there another, different magic solution to that? Uh, that's, that's the question in my head, it's like...
No, absolutely, it's, um, uh, but rather than putting the cart before the horse, um, and everything, maybe we can have some incentives or disincentives or anything along those lines. It's why we have structured the interlocal agreement the way we have right now.
Interlo...
And again, uh, you know, parsing through it for the next couple of weeks, because I know that's what I'm going to be doing on Thanksgiving.
Right?
And, and then adding this to the workshop, so we can discuss it further in a couple of weeks, I think, is very, very prudent with this. So, um, we can just, we can discuss it again, but everybody has made valid points tonight, and I think, uh, continuing this matter a couple of weeks in there, then.
Tom's like, February?
You get, Councilmember Baldwin.
I just want to do a double, triple piggyback. I don't, I feel like, but maybe it's a triple. Um, but yeah, definitely, great point from, uh, Councilmember Swatman in regards to, um, just the lack of language in, um, stating times for termination. Um, I think the ongoing with mutual is, that can be a little tricky, because, you know, what if, you just never know when you get married, right?
Mm-hmm.
You just never know. Um, and then also looking at, um, and I'm assuming that's why it's highlighted, but, you know, the fact that you need mutual consent from both parties, um, in order to use another treatment facility, but I think putting some sort of a timestamp to revisit, um, is, is a lot more wiser, so...
Mm-hmm.
Instead of indefinite... Instead of indefinite times.
No, I certainly agree with that. Councilmember Watson?
I brought, I brought a few things like we talked, talked about tonight at CDC today, and our non-involvements, the changes they're making to it now, where the council can now put part of the meetings, we'll see what's going on. There's always complaint in the past, says, okay, they need new this and that, why are they, why do they need it? How we know they're using it that way? What's going on? Why are we being charged with this? So as long as the council members in the future go to those meetings, see what's happening, to make their own comments and decisions that way, will help make it beneficial for you, too. So we're, we're going towards that. And until we start getting involved with what they're doing, it's hard for us, for this thing to say, well, why you charge us so much more? Because you got to be there, what's involved, what's happening, what's, what's causing the expense? Like back the old, the dryer has to be done. Well, why is a new dryer going to benefit us? Well, you have to know, you have to see the facility which you, while you've done to, you have to see the, the benefits from it, too. So I think it'll go in the right direction here, we'll continue to see how it goes, and have the language in there and something, 20 years from now, we want to wake, walk away from it, we should be able to do that, too.
No, I agree, that's really good. Okay. Deputy Mayor Carter?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fullerton, and then Deputy Mayor.
So that was my point about the 60% that I was saying, because when we got our study back from the water, the, the sewer for Bonny Lake was more expensive than the sewer for Sumner. So that was just the point that I was trying to make, there, we're paying more than they are, regardless of whether we have more people or whatever it is, but it, it's averaging out to about 60% of the bill, so I would like that to be looked at.
I, I, I think I'm following you, and certainly we can look at that, I think it's important to remember that, that when we're talking about total sewer bill, there's other factors that, that calculate into that beyond just the cost to treat at the treatment plant. There's, you know, unique collection systems that have their own unique pieces of infrastructure. Those make a difference, and there, there are going to be different costs between the two cities, so that, that is, is probably the single biggest reason why we see a difference in the, in the, if you will, I guess, to, to use a phrase you use, the average sewer utility bill you see in Sumner versus what you're seeing up at Bonny Lake. They're not going to be identical, because they can't be identical, they're two unique systems.
And Deputy Mayor, would this be an item that you think would be ripe for the retreat, or any retreat that we may have?
Depending on when they want to have this done.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree, one of the main things with, with our system is terrain, right, in getting it there and all that, too, so. And that costs money, unfortunately. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward, I think we're moving in the right direction, I thank you for that. I think it's really good to get that, you say, the tunnel or whatever, a vibe of cooperation and understanding.
That was a weird word.
Right?
No, I said tunnel.
I, I ignored the word, play on that. But, but I do think it is good to have some council members sitting on that committee and so that we understand what's going on, because it does, I think we have heard that over and over again, it's been kind of, well, we need this, and this is what you're going to pay. And if we actually understand and have been in around those conversations, it's much easier to take that and understand like, oh, we do need that. So that will be very helpful. And then I know, I just wanted to say, Ryan and I talked the other day about making it a little bit easier, Councilmember Baldwin asked right off the bat, you know, what's the difference in, in these two things? So we talked about doing like a strikeout kind of language, so we can see what changed, essentially. I think that would make it a lot easier to decipher for council members in the future regarding some of these proposals or whatnot, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And to piggyback on you, I want to thank Mr. Johnstone and his team for all the work, all the wonderful work that you've done on this, and going in the direction that I was hoping for when, when wanted to be to actually restructure the, the interlocal agreement, and I think we're going in the right direction, I agree with Councilmember Watson. And, well, and everybody with, with how we're going about this, so thank you for everything. Do we have anything further?
Just thank you, Ryan.
Before I adjourn, I want to wish everybody a happy and a very safe Thanksgiving.
Gobble, gobble.
Yes, if you are traveling like I am, I hope everything will be fine, so. All right, meeting is adjourned.